We're going to go ahead and call to order our work session for today. We have some other council members that will be arriving shortly. For sake of time, I know some other things going on. We'll go ahead and start. And city manager, first item?
Certainly. First item for your work session today is sharing information related to the warehouse district development and the various transportation impacts. You may recall the council asked for the staff from transportation and city planning to provide some feedback about kind of what's going on in the district and the impacts of the various site plans we've received and the rezoning cases that are going to come for you. So we have several folks from transportation and city planning here, and I believe Ken Bowers is going to kick us off.
So I'll start with an overview of what's on the boards and what's happening in the warehouse district from a development and zoning perspective. Then I will turn it over to Eric Lamb in transportation to go over some of the traffic numbers and analysis and implications, and then I'll come back with a very brief and high-level overview of what this means for taxes and value capture. So we'll start with the snapshot, then the transportation picture, and then talk about facility fees and value capture strategies. So this map highlights the area sort of between Western Boulevard and Morgan Street and bounded by Dawson and Boylan Avenue, which we're kind of calling our core study area, though we've included some site plans and zoning cases that were just outside of this. So there's a number of zonings, rezonings that are either pending a public hearing or still in the review process, a couple that have been approved, one that has yet to be submitted, which is the Russ Bus Site, the Triangle Transit or Triangle, Go Triangle Site, just north of Raleigh Union Station, that is not submitted yet, but we know is coming. And some of these are fairly modest, but some of them are fairly large and ambitious. Probably the biggest ones are Z 2818, that's the Clancy and Thays property where the, near where the former Amtrak station was located, and then the Russ Bus Site is the other significant one where there's a thought that there may be an ask for 20 to 40 stories on that property. These numbers kind of show if you built out the maximum of these land uses and they're -- should not be seen as cumulative because, you know, you might be trading off office space for residential space within the zoning envelope. But the cumulative impact of all these zonings are that the residential yield may go up by 1,500 units based on existing zoning, another 850 or so thousand square feet of office space, 400,000 square feet of retail space, or what's theoretically possible in terms of development increases. So it's a not insignificant amount of additional land use, dwelling units, and commercial floor space that could be permitted if all of these zonings were to be approved as they're currently proposed. There's also been a large number of development plans in this area. I would say south of the tracks, what we've mostly seen are sort of smaller scale, low and mid-rise residential. There's been a number of townhouse developments and also some interesting reuse, site review in for a new barbecue restaurant that would go into a gas station, where there's some larger projects to the north. And the main one that's in the, within the warehouse, the highlighted white area, is related to one in Glenwood, is the hotel and parking deck that's on the south side of Morgan Street. And then, of course, a second phase of that development is currently under review that would include a new parking deck and a new office building and some mixed use between Morgan and Hillsborough Street. And then 301 Hillsborough, which is a site that the city sold some years ago, combined with some additional private property located at Dawson and Morgan Street and Hillsborough Street, is also under review right now. And so these vary in size, but by far the largest one is 301 Hillsborough Street. All told, that's about 1.1 million square feet of development contemplated on that block. The Nass Square Hotel and the Block 83 parking deck are the other larger site plans currently under review. So with that, I'll turn it over to Eric to go over some of the transportation implications of this pending and pipeline development.
So this area is interesting relative to the downtown street grid. We're on the edge of the original William Christmas Plan, and most of the streets in the area are two-way streets, with the exception of Dawson McDowell is the major north-south one-way pair. And in fact, we recently completed the two-way conversion of both South Street and Lenore Street. So where we had one-way streets, we've actually been moving towards taking those away. There's few opportunities to expand the grid in this area, and we'll talk a little about the West Street Extension. One of the things that we've also talked about in the context of some future redevelopment with the Raleigh Housing Authority property is extending Western Boulevard all, I'm sorry, extending West Street all the way to Western Boulevard. And this is something that was broached in concept as part of the Southern Gateway Plan. So there was some exploration of that idea as part of that. Once you accomplish that extension of the entire West Street Extension across the railroad tracks and all the way to Western Boulevard, then you open up access to Western as another east-west street. Otherwise, your primary east-west connectors really are only Hargett, I'm sorry, Hillsborough and Morgan Street. So we've talked a lot about the West Street Extension in the past. The first portion of construction of this was actually completed as part of the Raleigh Union Station construction. So as part of our planning for the street, we've set the horizontal and vertical profile for the street, and so the first portion of Raleigh Union Station built to that profile. If there's any additional development on the south side, then there's a similar expectation that that same type of construction would take place. And there's been some indications that that may be helpful relative to some of the potential grading of some of these sites adjacent to the right-of-way. So one of the advantages for that for us is that it helps us reduce our net capital cost for what we need to be able to fund the overall project, which we estimate to be between 20 and 30 million dollars. Right now, that project, we have completed the environmental assessment. It's part of the EA Fonzie environmental assessment and a finding of no significant impact. That final document is on the desk at Federal Rail Administration waiting to be signed. And then our next step on that is to move that project into production. So we will, we will start the design process. Council will remember that we allocated about 10 million dollars from the 2017 transportation bond for this project. So we'll take a portion of those funds and apply those for the design cost of the project. And so we'll start to move forward. We've already had some preliminary conversations with NCDOT. They're going to be a partner with us in terms of reviewing the project. And the anticipation is that through their spot process, through prioritization in their transportation improvement program, this project just did miss the cutoff this year with the draft that's been released. So our discussion with the rail division has been that we anticipate that the project in two years, when the next TIP is published, would likely cross over that line. And what DOT has agreed to is that if we'll move forward with handling the initial preliminary design on the project, that they'll then take over the project at the end and take over construction administration, actually be responsible for building the project. And so it's a good, good collaboration for us and a good use of resources. DOT has got more experience in terms of working with major rail projects because there'll have to be modifications associated with the actual railroad lines and new structures that are added. So they'll be part of the consultant selection process for us. We want to bring somebody in for consultant work that has got experience working with the railroads and someone that NCDOT is confident with. But the RFP for that project should be out within the next two weeks.
Question?
Yes, sir.
That's for the design portion?
Correct.
Okay. And the if and when it's funded, DOT takes over, they'll, they'll fund the entire project?
So part of the, part of where we're in a sweet spot with this is that, like I said, there's 10 million dollars. We're estimating probably in the $3 million range for what the design costs are going to be. That remaining balance of that 10 million would be used as our local match for the project. Now, if there's opportunities between now and then for things like build grants, if we can take advantage of that, we will look into that. We've had those conversations with DOT.
Formerly Tiger?
That's exactly right. And like I said before, with the, with the work that adjacent properties, just like we did on the northern section, the southern section would install the streetscapes that we would need for the sidewalk and everything else. So it would look as a finished product in advance of if this, if this site franchise were to develop here, it would look a lot like what we did up on the northern end. So it'd be very similar to that.
So just one more step into the, the build grant. You saying that staff is actively pursuing this project as a build grant?
Not today. And in fact, there's a call for build right now, and we don't have the resources available to be able to make, make the application and put that grant in within such a narrow time period. But we've talked about positioning ourselves for the next iteration of the build grant cycle. One of the biggest hurdles with this in terms of not just grant writing, but there's a substantial benefit cost analysis that has to meet some federal thresholds, and we don't have that expertise in-house. We have to hire that out. And so we, we have to position ourselves to be able to make that application.
I guess you've made the decision that chances of getting the grant are not worth the extra expenditures to go after it?
It's, it's not about that. It's a matter that the timeframe is too short, and we don't have everything in place that we would need to go after the grant application with such a narrow timeframe. We think it's a great project. One other aspect of the transportation system in this area is something that we talked about with the city council back several years ago as part of the Raleigh Union Station and high-speed rail conversations, and that is the, the future closure of Hargett Street. And so part of that is necessitated by the fact that the future expansion of Raleigh Union Station entails a second platform, and that platform would come either when we start commuter service on the north line up CSX to the northern communities, or it would come with the implementation of southeast high-speed rail. Now, neither of those initiatives are funded, but this is what the future expansions would look like. There would be a concourse that would connect from Raleigh Union Station directly onto this platform. You can see the platform actually extends north of Morgan Street. And then some of the concepts for high-speed rail, because of the size of the train, that that bridge is extended even as far north as Hillsborough Street. So this is a long-term consideration, but it's, it's something that we take into consideration that is part of the network in this area that will be compromised at some point out of necessity for improving our multimodal service here. So, and at that point, the good news is that there's really not a lot of traffic that uses Hargett today, and part of that's because you have to cross so many train tracks. It's convenient, but it's not, it's not critical relative to the transportation system, so. And along those lines, just to give you a picture, these are average daily traffic counts that we've got, just to sort of show you what the network looks like in downtown for where we have traffic counts in this area. And the major corridors, as you can see with Dawson and McDowell, carrying 18,000 to 25,000 cars per day, those are, those are one-way streets, and so one-way streets do have the option of being able to carry a little more traffic than a two-way street does. Has some advantages there. But just to give you a sense of perspective for the volumes, for example, along Lenore Street, those traffic volumes are in the 1,900 to 2,000 vehicles per day range, so relatively low for what a two-way street, two-lane, two-way street can actually handle. You can see some variability along Boylan Avenue from as low as 3,500 on the south end to over 7,000 on the north end. So the traffic varies from block to block in certain areas. And then on the south end of Hargett Street, you can see we're looking at about 10,000 ADT on that section. So I want to give you those numbers just to lay a framework to say, you know, as we look at traffic, and this, these are some good back-of-the-envelope, rule-of-thumbs numbers for what the general capacity is for certain types of streets. Now, if, if there are streets that can carry more traffic than this based on certain characteristics of directional travel during times of day, but this gives you just a good frame of reference. So what we're talking about in the warehouse district specifically and in the southern part are mostly two-lane streets. So to get an idea of what we're looking at in terms of frame of what the traffic carrying capacity of some of those streets are, we're talking about 10,000 cars a day. In a situation where you go to three lanes and with the center turn lane, you end up creating less friction for turns and improvements there that gets you to 20,000 vehicles per day. And again, this is, this is not an exact number, but it gives you an idea of what those ranges would look like and what our expectations are. So if we end up in a situation where we've got to look at mitigating traffic impacts for the sum of developments in these area, you know, it's interesting that one of the things that we've done recently along Boylan Avenue, for example, is we've removed the traffic signals. Those were not coordinated signals, but those were, those were older traffic signals. We've gone back in on the four-way stops. And we've got a number of four-way stops located in the northern portion of the warehouse district. But one of the things that can be done, if we're looking at trying to improve existing flow and capacity along the street, is we can install coordinated traffic signals. One of the other things, and it's especially true within a dense urban framework, is looking at multimodal transportation. So having connected sidewalks, having transit choices, having bicycle facilities. And this is something that is being actively discussed with the downtown element currently with the downtown operations plan, in terms of looking at which streets are going to be primary transit streets as we're looking at how to integrate bus rapid transit into our network, and then which streets would have more bicycle orientation and more vehicular orientation. So that's a, that's a conversation that's in progress right now. Turn lanes are another way to increase capacity with, with streets. So again, with a lot of our two-way, two-lane streets where they have intersections, there are no turn lanes, and the signals are fairly simple, but you could carve out turn lanes and improve the capacity there. One of the things that's interesting is, is how you design a parking deck can have an influence on the street system because of where you take money in, where the points of access are. If they're close to the street, those queues can back up out onto the street and create some congestion, whereas if they're set further into the actual deck structure, that queuing takes place inside the deck. And so we're, we're pushing newer development to have that point of access further set in so that we don't have that queuing out on the street. Another way, as I talked about, the difference between two-lane and three-lane streets, one way that we can increase capacity is to remove the on-street parking and create a three-lane street. So most of the streets that we've got, especially within the Christmas Plan, are wide enough that you could remove the on-street parking and re-stripe it, so you have one lane each direction and a two-way center turn lane. And that comes with trade-offs, obviously. And then, we're not, don't relish the idea of this, but we could go back to one-way streets. One-way streets are more efficient, but one of the reasons why we have moved away from one-way streets is that two-way streets are seen as more people-friendly. So, and that's something that we was part of the original downtown planning in 2003, and we've continued to move forward in that direction.
Would you talk about some of the downsides to the removal of the on-street parking? You mentioned there are some trade-offs. Can you talk about those?
There's, and there's trade-offs with all of these. And for example, if we were to add turn lanes at key intersections, that would usually necessitate removing some on-street parking adjacent to those intersections.
Okay.
Yeah, so. So, and you know, I want to back up one second before I show you these actual numbers. I'm going to qualify something. That we get numbers for trip generation from different types of uses that we use in our traffic studies through the Institute of Transportation Engineers. They publish rates that are based on observations taken across the country for different types of land uses. One of the things that we have found is that most of those observations tend to be very suburban in nature across the country. And as such, the, the rates that we get from ITE tend to over-predict traffic volumes that are in an urban framework, okay? So for example, when we did the traffic study for the PNC Tower, we predicted that there was going to be a high level of traffic impact associated with that. But I think if, as users of downtown, you can, you can see fairly clearly that it really doesn't have that. And part of that is twofold. One, that traffic for that type of use is distributed among multiple parking decks. And two, because it's a, it's a mixed-use facility, and you've got so many other uses that are close by, people are walking to amenities, people don't get, go to get in their car to go to lunch because you walked to lunch. So it's an interesting paradigm relative to, as we do traffic studies, it's one of the reasons why we specifically have an exemption for traffic studies in the downtown district as part of the UDO. It's because they, they frequently over-predict the amount of impacts, and if we look at trying to make measures to mitigate those impacts, we're upsetting the downtown urban fabric of the streets and the streetscapes. So there's, there's, again, that kind of trade-off. So when I show you these numbers, I want to put some of these in context. I split this up between north and south. The railroad really is the, the major barrier as it cuts across the center of this area, that it creates two physically kind of separate districts. So you can see as far as the approved development, and these should match up with the maps and lists that you've got, north, we're talking about a total of 3,900 additional trips daily, and then we can break that out based on those averages for AM and PM. So again, this is worst case. This is, this is based on suburban numbers. We do not anticipate that the actual traffic impacts would be this high. For the south side, you can see there's more developments there, but the total net number of, of trips generated are fairly low. The other thing that, you know, we're not taking, these are just raw numbers, we're not taking into account, certain types of uses have what we call pass-by trips. The, the best example I can tell you is, you know, if you're, if you're on your way home and you're driving by a gas station, you know, you're, you're stopping into that use, and then you're continuing on your way. When you create new uses like that, those are existing trips on the network. The other thing is what we call trip capture, and where you have a building that's got multiple uses in it or multiple adjacent uses. Like I said with the example with the PNC Tower, those, those trips, you don't generate new car trips, you generate people trips. And so as a result, you're not generating as much vehicular traffic as you otherwise would.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, you may have missed it. The left two columns are peak hour?
Peak hour, that's right. And the peak hour for us is the, the highest peak in the morning between 7:00 and 9:00, and the highest peak in the afternoon between 4:00 and 6:00 p.m. So this is mostly the, the pending development, it's generally been approved or on deck. And then this is in the upcoming file. So you can see substantially more in terms of what's north of the railroad corridor in the south, not as much. Now, there's one wild card that we haven't included in this list, and that is the Z 3218 project. That is the one that's located outside the study area and south of Western Boulevard along South Saunders Street. That's about a nine-acre development. That's a fairly dense and intense development at this point, and by comparison on these, it on its own would generate about 20,000 additional trips. And so we're still looking into that right now as far as what the, we've got the draft traffic study from the applicants. We're looking at what that means relative to the street network and what types of mitigations would need to be considered. And just to give you a comparison, for example, we're working with Rex Hospital right now on their new medical campus on the west side of Blue Ridge Road. That single development is going to generate about 13,000 trips per day. And that type of development, because there's no adjacent land uses, because it's suburban, there's, there are no opportunities for reducing those kind of trips with those types of measures that I was talking about before from trip capture and adjacent uses. So, but again, some of these numbers seem high, but I want to remind you that this is not a realistic projection of what the actuals would be.
Is there a way for us to get some kind of actuals that we could use to really benchmark what we need to do?
Well, I mean, that's part of the conversation here is when we look at the net of what we're talking about here for development and what happens within a downtown urban framework, we're, we're not that concerned relative to the resiliency of the network to be able to absorb that type of traffic. I think a good example is if you look at the development that's already taken place within the warehouse district between the, the Food Hall and the Dillon Tower and Raleigh Union Station, the, the traffic that's, that's there has, has barely changed. I mean, it was, it's a fairly low-volume environment to begin with, and so based on what we've been looking at, and like I said before, we've got the exemptions on for TIA s within downtown, we don't think it's going to make a, a big impact, even, even though these numbers look large, we don't think it's going to be a substantial impact in the actual operation of the traffic.
Thank you.
So just to follow up on that, so the idea, of course, what we'd like to know is... So just to follow up on that, so the idea, of course, what we'd like to know is whether the real projected trips in an urban setting, and then from there, what would be the level of service at various intersections? Because obviously, that's where things break down, is when the trips are, you know, in a signalized intersection. And, I mean, these numbers, as you say, they don't really speak to the urban setting and further, they don't speak to, you know, level F service at any particular signalized intersection in this vicinity. Makes it difficult to turn these numbers into something that directs a particular course of action.
Right. That, that's entirely valid. And I don't think that we're going to be in a position, there's, like I said, because the grid is what it is within downtown, there's so much redundancy with the system. You've got some congestion on Hillsborough Street, trips go to Morgan Street. If there's congestion there, you go to Martin Street. I mean, it's, it's, it's one of the advantages of grid, one of the reasons why we preach the, the merits of interconnectivity. This is one of those things that there's no single one project that's, you know, really upsetting the system. And then the other wild card is the transit. I mean, once we start to introduce bus rapid transit and create good mode choices within downtown, that certainly creates an advantage. So I think from, from our standpoint, you know, we will be in a position to sit back and, and monitor and see how the, how each development comes online and see what the actual absorption rate is of the transportation infrastructure. But really, I mean, I think that one of the advantages we've got in downtown, it's the densest development in the city and the most development in the city, and yet when you compare it to traffic considerations that we have in other parts like Glenwood Avenue, for example, it's, it's not even close.
I mean, obviously, there are some barriers, mainly the train tracks downtown. Of course, West Street is just enormous opportunity to recreate the grid in a way that it's hard to get across those tracks.
Meaningful.
So one of the things that I wanted to, to make you aware of is that each individual development pays into, pays facility fees, and, and we have three different types of facility fees, sometimes known as impact fees in other communities. We do, facility fees for transportation, open space, and water and sewer. Now, open space only applies to residential at this point, but the other developments all pay into transportation and water and sewer. And so the, the fundamental basis behind a, an impact fee like this is that each development is paying some proportion of its net impact to the entire transportation system. And so we went through a fairly substantial exercise a number of years ago to update and modernize our impact fee system, and we're looking at what it's going to take to do our next round of updates associated with that. But those fees are collected within benefit zones, and so the, the fees are split up within those benefit zones to pay for debt service that we have for transportation. Some of those monies go directly into our capital improvement program, and then some of those funds go into a reimbursement kitty that's available for developers when we force them to, to oversize streets beyond what's necessary to serve the development. They're eligible for reimbursements for the right of way they dedicate and for the, the oversizing of the construction that they do.
Good question, though.
Yes, sir.
Back to Councilor Stevenson's question about level of service. Do you have level of service under current conditions for the intersections downtown?
No.
Would we be able to get that?
No. I mean, that's the type of thing that we would have to do, a detailed engineering study of the entire downtown. It requires you to go through and take current intersection turning movement counts. We've got a, what, 120 intersections throughout downtown, if I'm not mistaken. It, it, that's a fairly large-scale study to be able to do that. So it's not the type of thing that we monitor on a, on a daily basis.
Well, you must have some feel for key intersections that perhaps could provide us some insights. I mean, having some data is better than having no data. So would that be something that we could do, Mr. Manager, is get some level of service data for key intersections downtown?
We certainly could do a study if the council would so desire. One of the questions you would just simply want to ask is what would the scope and cost and timing of that study be, and defer to transportation planning?
Could you provide us some options to take a look at?
Sure. I mean-
I'd like, what's the goal first?
Well, the, the goal is to better understand where we're at currently with the capacity of our intersections downtown and how they're operating.
And what would that tell us?
It would tell us-
It would tell us exactly how we're, how our intersections are operating downtown. Drive around and figure that out. But the question being, once you have that information, what will you do with it? Like, what are you hoping it would answer?
I would, I would incorporate that in my decision-making about rezoning decisions and, and decisions regarding development. I mean, the understanding what our current infrastructure is, I think, is kind of important when we make those decisions about future growth and development downtown.
And I worry about the cost of what that would take to do.
I worry about what the cost would be to the city if we didn't do that.
So, so I think the key in what I'm hearing is what is needed is finding out what it would cost for such a survey. Is that what I'm hearing from-
You're looking-
Right, and that's why I've asked for options to look at-
Right.
Trying to get some data for key intersections downtown.
Right. I'm just restating, I'm restating what I'm hearing.
Sure.
So I can make sure that from a council, we're all kind of on the same page and staff understands and asks that is being made of them.
Yeah. If, if you want key intersections, we can do that in-house. I mean, eliminating intersections, that's, that's not a problem. If it was the entire downtown, 120-plus intersections, that's more involved than we can, than we can absorb.
Understood.
So, and what you're going to find-
I drive through downtown every day. I go down McDowell Street, and, and I'm actually quite interested in knowing if those intersections are currently at a level F when I go through downtown at rush hour.
Yeah, and McDowell and Dawson are interesting because oftentimes there's external factors. Like, for example, if there's an incident on South Saunders Street or even I-40, that can create an adverse queuing impact along portions of Dawson and McDowell. You know, so there's, there's a lot of factors that go into that. And just because there's queuing doesn't necessarily mean there's an adverse level of service, and vice versa. So, but yeah, if your, if your interest is primarily in the Dawson-Mdowell corridor, we can look at some key intersections and bring you back some of that, that information.
Well, that, and I would, I would say some east-west corridors like Hillsborough Street, for example, and Morgan.
So is that also other councillors interested in the same information?
Well, I-
I'm asking, are other councillors also interested in the same information as far as key intersections, the, the traffic?
Yeah, I mean, I think one of the things I hear from constituents a lot is concerns about, you know, do we have the appropriate infrastructure to support the development that we're trying to, you know, that, that we look at every day? And I think having some basic information about that would be very helpful.
So, yeah, and I'll agree-
I believe you got it, and you already have it available.
It's not readily available, we can, we can get it.
So I'll just more or less reiterate what I heard that, and then that is, we are called upon to make decisions every day about how to allocate resources and what to approve and, and where to spend money on infrastructure, and obviously, we want to have good data on which to base those decisions. And so I think particularly as we look at the density of new proposals coming forward, I think it is, we have a responsibility to try to have good data on which to make decisions about where should we be investing in infrastructure, where should be, be asking new developments to participate and share the cost of the infrastructure that's going to benefit the mobility to and from their projects. And so I think it's, I mean, the, the whole point of us being here today, as far as I could tell, is to get good data so we can make good decisions about how the density of development and the trips generated and the infrastructure that's available to service it is going to be provided.
Thank you. I think we've kind of given it direction.
I would like some clarity. Is, is the scope, just maybe if I could frame it this way, and then you guys can correct as needed. So what I'm hearing is a, a paper that comes back that talks about looking at what the key, the key intersections, and let's identify what those key intersections are for a level of service, and what it would take for us to do that analysis and bring that back.
Is that in the warehouse district, or is that all over?
Just downtown.
Just downtown.
I, I was, I was hearing key intersections downtown.
Key intersections downtown.
Is that right?
Thank you.
But not the scope of the entire downtown, all intersections. Is that good?
Yeah, not all intersections, just key intersections downtown.
Key intersections, both directions, east-west and north-south.
Correct.
Is that correct?
I can make a couple of suggestions. So I'd like to suggest the intersection of South Saunders and South Street.
Can you just go ahead and highlight them on the map so we can help?
Yep.
Is it hard to read the map?
The, let's see if I can, Hillsborough is just off the map, but the intersection of Hillsborough and Boylan would be good, intersection of Hillsborough and, and Morgan would be good, a couple of locations, Hillsborough and Dawson, Hillsborough and McDowell. And then I'm open to suggestions on other locations. How about Martin Street?
Martin and up at Lenore.
That's seven intersections. Any, any others?
I was looking at Lenore Street and McDowell.
I can't, I can just, I can go ahead and tell you that it's going to, I mean, it'll be very favorable in terms of, that's, that's not a concern because of how low the traffic volumes are on Lenore Street. But if you, if you want to, we can do that. It's probably going to be A or B.
You picked South Street the very first one, right?
Yes, South Street and South, and South Saunders.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. That's kind of the heart of the southern half of this, this district.
And, and if you could add something like McDowell and Jones or McDowell and Lane, that would be fine.
Okay.
So actually, Mr. Lamb, that means we could probably just do that analysis and bring it back rather than providing options. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we'll skip the option step and then just go to the analysis since you, you were specific in the identification of the intersections. Is that-
Right.
Okay.
That's fine.
Very good, thank you.
Give us a feel for it.
So as I mentioned with, with impact fees, with facility fees, the fees that are paid go into, the, the city is split up into three geographic areas for benefit zones. And so the monies that we take in in those benefit zones are ideally spent in those benefit zones. And so as we looked at the, the first table of the pending development, our estimate, and it's, it's a little tough to nail down an exact number because there's some credits that would be allowed for some of the pre-existing developments that's on the site, but we estimate generally between 750 and $1 million worth of, of facility fees. With the pending and proposed development, and this is also including the, the Z-32 site to the south, we're looking at a fairly substantial amount of, of development fees, facility fees that would be available for us to use. Any questions about that? Okay. So at this point, I'm going to turn it back over to Ken, and Ken's going to give you some feedback about-
Actually, the, the fees you just highlighted there, those are just the transportation portion of facility fees?
Correct. Just the transportation portion, not the open space, not the water and sewer.
Thank you. All right.
So given there's other items on the agenda, I'll try to be fairly fast with this. When people talk about value capture, the most common tools that they talk about are tax increment financing and special assessment districts. Difference between them is tax increment financing does not generate any new revenue per se. It simply takes revenue that would have otherwise ended up in the general fund and allocates it for a specific purpose to support a development project. And because of that, it typically should be tied to a but-for test that without the public participation and investment in the project, it would not happen, and therefore the tax increment would not be realized. Special assessment district is different for two reasons, one of which is that of an impact existing tax base as well as future development. And it's actually an additional levy in the same way that like the downtown Raleigh Alliance is supported by a tax levy that is higher in the downtown than elsewhere, and you would have a tax levy that would be higher in the special assessment district. So it actually is generating new money. The money generated by both these methods can generally be spent on the same types of things, which include, you know, any sort of public infrastructure, also includes parking decks, things of that nature, streetscapes, roadways, et cetera. So this table is our estimate, and we're often a little bit in, on the zoning side and, and, and making some assumptions about what would happen because our, our zoning is mixed-use zoning, and so there's lots of different permutations of uses, but we try to come up with sort of a best guess scenario, either based on representations made by the applicant as what their intention was, or just looking at the typical mix of downtown large-scale mixed-use projects. So in terms of what is in the pipeline in terms of site plans, we estimate that there's about $157 million of value that would be created if all of those were built out based on what they are currently, what's currently under review. And that was based on our real estate division looking at per-square-foot valuations of, of buildings that would be comparable. The rezoning side, it's a much larger figure, close to $1.3 billion of new taxable value on top of what the current is. And that's really driven by two potential projects. One is the Clancy and Thays side, and the other is Rusbus. Those are, that's the lion's share of that, because these other rezonings are fairly small by comparison.
Rusbus.
Rusbus, yeah. And, you know, that's a very large number for the Clancy and Thays site, maybe somewhat optimistic, but in general, there's a lot of potential enhancement to the tax base from this. Now, the way tax increment financing works, and this is a diagram, is you, you create a project area and you freeze the baseline property value and say that the taxes we're currently collecting will continue to go into the general fund, but anything over and above that that happens because the new development is going to be allocated to the tax increment district and be used to either pay-as-you-go or to bond for, for capital projects within the tax increment area. And, you know, the, the, which one of these things is good? The, the thing is, everything in this triangle has two things associated that make TIF financing particularly difficult in ways. First of all, you've got to build the infrastructure upfront, but the revenues don't really start to grow until the out-years, so that's why that triangle gets bigger as you go on. The other thing, of course, is that at the creation, that's the present. Everything in that, in that light blue triangle is the future, and therefore it's a projection. And there's a risk that, that, that won't all happen at the time that you think is going to happen, or that the build-out won't, won't reach the ultimate phase. And so it's, you know, you have to deal with the fact that you've got debt that you incur soon, but then the revenues are coming years later as the project gets built out. And then secondly, the revenues are somewhat speculative because they're based on our projection of how much development will happen within the TIF district. Just taking the values that were on this two slides ago and multiplying it by our current tax rates, you can see that the site plans will generate about $700,000 of new revenue to the city and about a million to the county, if I'll realize. The rezoning is as much larger, could generate, you know, about 5.7 million to the city going forward. So that's the increment if, at, you know, at the end of that triangle, if all this stuff comes into fruition.
So question, excuse me, question. Go back two slides to the triangle?
Yeah.
Just want to make sure I understand. So at the creation of the TIF, you set the baseline property value in that tax?
That's right. That's basically whatever the property is worth within the, within the project area or district today, and that continues to flow into the general fund. But new stuff gets built, that increment is put into the, into the, a special pot of money to service your TIF bonds or to pay for projects within the, the TIF area.
So when the termination of the TIF, then it just ends, and then the rest of the money-
Yeah, it becomes general fund revenue.
Back to general fund, okay.
Yeah. I mean, the point I'd like to make is that if you use some other, and, you know, synthetic TIF, which is basically doing this, not using the statutory authority, but doing it through other, but you had a different bonding mechanism, you're simply collecting the same amount of tax, but you're using a different financing mechanism. The unfamiliar, you know, true TIF done under the project development finance statute in North Carolina has so many guardrails on it that I, I think there's like only two or three examples of it being used statewide since it was introduced around 2005. So most places that have done these types of deals, and Durham has done them, Charlotte and has done them, have done it through the synthetic mechanism where they used a different bonding instrument like revenue bonds, and then, you know, structured it that way instead of using the actual statutory authority.
Okay.
And how do you determine when the termination is?
Well, it's when the, when the, all the debt is retired.
Oh, okay.
And there's no more expenses within the TIF district.
But just for, for me and maybe others, the benefit of this is that you can borrow against the anticipated tax revenues, and you can put the infrastructure improvements in, but then the actual payoff of that debt happens after the project is done.
That's right. And so there's a longer carry before you, you have to structure it in such a way where you're, you're not making normal payments you would make on bonds in the early years. And I mean, Allison's probably back there, you know, saying, who is this guy to be talking you would make on bonds in the early years. And I mean, Allison's probably back there, you know, saying, who is this guy to be talking about? But, you know, the risk associated, there's a higher cost of capital and the structure of it is gonna be this more, generally gonna be more costly to, to finance things. And I think the, the communities that have turned to this instrument, turned to it in North Carolina because they didn't have other good options. If you have other good options, it's better to structure it probably differently. But it provides you an accounting framework for thinking about, is the investment producing a return on investment in terms of tax revenue? So from the standpoint of the accounting framework, even if you don't actually call it a TIF district or use, you know, the TIF statute, it allows, it allows you to think about, is this a good investment in terms of the tax revenue we're getting in return for investing in public infrastructure that supports new development?
The one I heard you say was, we probably wouldn't do this.
I think we would probably not do it. And I mean, you know, at this point, you've gotta have, you know, a project kinda queued up that's ready to, to go and be funded and we're not, we have ideas for projects.
Could I maybe help a little bit? Actually, having worked on a few of these in the past, the concept of TIF financing districts is used quite frequently in other states. North Carolina has an extremely limited authority out there so that there's really, to my knowledge, only one district that's ever been created. Maybe two and that one failed.
Yeah.
And so there is, so the concept is important to put in front of you, the path is hard in North Carolina. That's maybe the takeaway. It's possible, but, but hard.
But, well, I mean, even in the synthetic TIF.
Synthetic version is a little bit different.
Still sounds like we, we have more cost-effective borrowing tools.
Yeah.
Right.
If I could, the, from, from more of the financing perspective, what I would say, Mr. Stevenson, is that in this particular context with a district within, with infrastructure improvements, there are other pathways I would suggest we look at first before trying to make this work. The synthetic version tends to work, and when, when we say synthetic, that means not a district. That means we receive the tax revenue and then we have a development agreement and return that revenue back to the developer in exchange for building something. But that money all comes at the end. Those models are, are better suited for other contexts than this one.
With the money then, the tax increment then would just, if we don't go this way, is, would just go into the general fund?
So that is correct. And so the growth revenue also then would theoretically go towards all the other impacts that the development would create, whether it's additional positions in the general fund operating budget or whether or not you take some of that and put it into capital projects and help fund a bond. So the but-for test, meaning but for this type of device, the development wouldn't occur, doesn't meet that standard here because we're talking about proposals that are actually being contemplated. So that's just growth revenue.
Okay. So, special assessment districts, this is a thing that's been on the books, I think from about the same period of time, mid-two thousands. It's Article ten A, Chapter one sixty-eight, which is the cities and towns section of the general statutes. You can level, the city can levy special assessments to cover capital costs and it's basically the same type of stuff that you could use the TIF statute for. And you can, you know, again, finance, you can bond against it. And of, of course, the assessment is a, is an additional tax, so it starts producing money off the existing tax base. And then that money, that revenue grows as development happens within the special assessment district. But it produces funds in year one. You know, you've gotta, again, have a proposed project that you're gonna fund, an estimated cost. And so you need to make sure that you can go forward with the project. So we would probably wanna be in a position, if that project was something like, you know, the West Street Extension, that we had approval to build it, we had a design to build it. So we're still working on those items right now. The law has sun, has been threatened with sunset several times. It's always been extended. The most recent sunset date is July one of next year. And this has also not been widely used in North Carolina. Now, the key thing is, you can't just impose it. You've gotta get a petition for the property owners to agree to it. At least half of them in terms of number and two-thirds of them in terms of valuation. And so as a result, if you're gonna get that petition, the people who are gonna be taxed have to feel like the tax they're paying is commensurate with the benefit that they are receiving in terms of the infrastructure. If they're fine going forward with their, with their project, without that public infrastructure investment is gonna be a much harder case to make that they should participate in a special assessment district. So, special assessment district is potentially powerful. The, within that white area on that first map I showed you, the current valuation in there is about four hundred and fifty million dollars. And the value increment of all the site plans and zonings, if it was all fully realized, is about three times that. So, you know, that's a lot of, that's a lot of potential assessment. Every cent that you put on the property tax in that area generates today about forty-five thousand dollars and at full build-out around a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So if you did ten cents on top of our normal, you know, forty-six cent tax rate, which would be a substantial increase in taxes, that would generate, you know, one point nine million dollars in special assessment revenue at full build-out. In the first year, that would only generate four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So your ability to raise money with a special assessment district is really based on how large a levy you can support with the assessment district and still retain the support of the property owners. A small levy is not gonna generate very much, a large levy would. But again, like I said before, in order to get the buy-in of the owners, you would have to, you know, convince them that this assessment is, is worth it to them, is creating extra value for their, for their real estate by making the public investment.
And are, is this, this area already in the downtown Raleigh Alliance?
Yeah, it is. So this would be on top of what they were paying to the DRA.
Yeah.
So, you know, obviously that is, that is a consideration as well.
I, I do need to clarify one thing. What's, what, the downtown Raleigh Alliance is a municipal service district, so different point of authority.
Got it. Thank you.
Well, and even.
But it's a, that, it's in that map.
Yes.
Yeah.
An important, more important distinction for me is the MSD is for sort of ongoing maintenance and refurbishment versus SA, special assessment would be for capital.
Right.
Correct.
Project.
And, you know, again.
MSDs are really designed for a capital.
You, if I could, you can, but the, usually the MSD rate is so small that it doesn't make sense.
So how many of these is this in North Carolina currently?
I am only aware of one. I don't even know if it's been implemented. I know that they're working on one in Hillsborough. On the TIF districts, the two are the famous Randy Parton Theater in Roanoke Rapids, which is the example that failed. The other one is the Kannapolis Research Campus in, in Kannapolis. Which I, I don't know what the financial status of that is, but there's a lot of stuff that's been built in that TIF district in Kannapolis. And of course, they were faced with the loss of their entire economic base with the closing of the Cannon Mills. They were in a very dire situation and looking to reposition themselves, which is, I think, is why they went down that, that road.
Okay. I think we definitely got some very good information that can help us as far as the transportation and looking at these two items here. Any other questions from councilors?
Just a comment, and that is, you mentioned the West Street Extension is a potential candidate for a special assessment district. And it sounds like that would make sense because there, you would presume there would be clear benefits to the developments in the area to have that kind of connectivity and that kind of access. I guess, of course, we just heard from Eric that there may be a different pot of money just around the horizon and that it may be in the DOT money or bill grant money or in other sources. I'm, it makes me think that if it's, scores high enough, that we should, there's no point in us racking our brains about getting together a special assessment district to do that kind of capital project if it's gonna be a DOT project in short order.
Well, yeah, I mean, I would, I would wholeheartedly agree. I mean, just looking at the narrow interest of the city and importing money from elsewhere that, you know, to pay for a project is the best of all possible worlds. So, yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you both. Now, Human Relations Commission work plan update?
Yes, Mayor Protem, members of council, as staffs can come forward and kinda get the presentation queued up. This next item is an update related to the Human Relations Work Plan and also an opportunity for our new executive director, Audrey Caesar, in our Housing and Neighborhoods Department and under Community Engagement, to talk to you a little bit about some of her assessments and experiences from working in other places in this particular function. As you may recall, the creation of the position and the organization was an attempt to try to elevate our contribution to this function. And so one of the things that we asked was for Dr. Caesar to do a, a review and sort of give us her feedback and thoughts about what she sees from her experience. So there's no action or any approvals today. This is really information sharing and perspective.
Good afternoon, members of council. I'm Dr. Audrey Caesar, the Executive Director of the Human Relations Commission. And so I've been here for about three months now. So I'm excited to share with you some of the things that I've observed.
Welcome.
Thank you. So as the first Executive Director of Human Relations, it's, it's very important to start with an assessment to develop a baseline of the operations for each of the boards that fall underneath my purview. And so they are listed here. And I wanna point out that I listed the Substance Use Advisory Commission. Thank you so much for voting on that. Also, I have the Mayor's Committee for Persons with Disabilities, the Fair Housing Hearing Board, and then the Human Relations Commission. The mission is promoting human dignity, equal opportunity, and mutual respect in harmony. And before I get into the presentation, I, I wanted to just take some time to talk about human relations. It's about promoting a healthy Raleigh. It's about ensuring fairness and justice for all people who live and work here. The aim is to bring awareness to social issues so that we can focus on protected classes such as age, race, class, gender, disability, and also religion. Most progressive cities have a Human Relations Commission. And when executed well, human relations ends up permeating all through city government in terms of service, values, and equity. Our current Human Relations Commission has an annual work plan, which they'll be presenting to you at some point. We have a retreat scheduled for June the thirteenth, so they'll be providing that. But some of the standard activities that they currently do are hosting community dialogues, administering human services grants, planning the Mayor's Unity Day Celebration, and then hosting the Human Relations Awards Banquet. So the purpose of my report is to establish a baseline for measuring effectiveness in how well we advise you, City Council, and also how well we engage the community and promote harmony within the city. So the next few slides are going to talk about some of my observations. And I wanna point out that these action items are things that could take time. So while we propose it today, it's important to know that if you implement today, the effects will be seen later on. And you'll see what I mean as I go through the slides. So the methodology that I used was direct observation, meaning attending meetings and activities, interviews with staff liaisons and also board members, and then review of secondary data. Council has recently reviewed the information on boards and commissions that was presented at the council retreat and also the twenty sixteen assessment of human relations. There was one done here in Raleigh. Our current structure shows four independent boards with different bylaws and different ordinances, different ways to operate. And in the proposed structure, three boards become arms of the Human Relations Commission. And let me just say that there are some natural synergies as we talk about human relations. For example, the Mayor's Committee for Persons with Disability, they have a subcommittee for housing. But you also have the Fair Housing Hearing Board that also deals with housing, and they deal with issues for individuals with disabilities. So there's some natural synergies and some overlap there. By combining this group into human relations as the umbrella in having Fair Housing Hearing Board, Substance Use Advisory Commission, and the Mayor's Committee as arms, now we can focus on collaboration, coordination. How do we approach these things together? The proposed model is consistent with what we see across the state. City of Charlotte has a model similar to this, Winston-Salem and Greensboro as well. They all have Human Relations Commission as the umbrella. This gives a great opportunity to, again, to coordinate some of the services and also to engage different groups around issues that might be of interest. I will note that the current Human Relations Commission has thirteen seats. I would request that if we adopted this model, we would add representation for each of the boards listed here. So that would be an additional three seats. So the next several slides are gonna outline some opportunities to help increase human resource, or I'm sorry, Human Relations Commission effectiveness, but also to clarify the relationship between Human Relations Commission and City Council. It's, again, I want to stress that with implementation, progress takes time. The first thing I would do is add guiding principles. We have the guiding principles listed here of prevention, quality of life, equity, and harmony. The focus areas being twofold, community health and human rights. If you've heard of the social determinants of health, you know that all of these areas are interrelated as it relates to quality of life. Descriptors are listed there, and you've seen all of this before, but I do wanna point out mental health being a part of this. As we talk about substance use, as we talk about trauma, as we talk about human rights, we can't avoid that topic. So the addition of a subcommittee would be useful on mental health. If nothing else, to talk about raising awareness and identifying resources for the residents of Raleigh. Next is the Fair Housing Hearing Board. In order to further equity in Raleigh, it's important that we have ways where we can actually collect data that shows that we are being equitable and that we're taking steps to actually document that. So the first thing is launching a testing program. Many cities have testing programs that look at how folks are, how lenders give loans. But also, what is it like as a renter? Is there discrimination based upon disability and/or race and/or number of children and people in the household? Those are things that we don't know for sure, and having a testing program would provide some input there. Next, we have the execution of our current fair housing ordinance. If you've seen the ordinance, it says that this group has hearing powers and also dispute resolution authority. The hearing board is not currently functioning in that capacity. So allowing this board to continue to hear cases or to begin hearing cases again would be important, again, for looking at equity. The last information that I received on it is that in the past, the Fair Housing Hearing Board did cases, did review cases, but that was back in nineteen ninety-five when it stopped. No one can tell me the reasons why it stopped, but that's what we know, that it actually stopped there. One opportunity for the city is to apply for a fair housing assistance program designation. This is where the federal government comes in and they actually allocate resources for us to do the investigations. So it, it's revenue generating in the sense that it would cover the investigations for us to do this work. There's a long process associated with that. Other cities in North Carolina have been applying. For example, Fayetteville-Cumberland is in the process of applying now. Charlotte already has this designation. So understanding that we can apply, it'll take time for the feds to get back to us. And then another consideration, if there's no change in the functions of the current board, then we should consider changing the name. If we're not going to actually hear cases, then maybe we should be called the Fair Housing Board versus the Fair Housing Hearing Board. But again, if we want to execute on the existing ordinance and increase equity, we have to have some level of enforcement. When it comes to board sizes, our Substance Use Advisory Commission has nine seats. Our Mayor's Committee for Persons with Disabilities is a little bit different. The process for becoming a member on Mayor's Committee is you come to three meetings or you attend for three months and you are designated a member. So that's very different. The Fair Housing Hearing Board has five members, and I would. The Fair Housing Hearing Board has five members, and I would suggest that we increase that number to seven. It's very difficult for five people to do the work, and they are volunteers. And then for the Human Relations Commission, as I mentioned with the proposed structure, the addition of three seats. And that represents the Substance Use Advisory Board, the Fair Housing Hearing Board, and the Mayor's Committee for Persons with Disabilities.
So, quick question. So those three additional seats would come from one person from those boards? Or would they just be another position that works with those boards?
Those three additional seats would be representatives from the three boards mentioned.
Okay.
When it comes to staffing, here's just a table showing what that looks like across the state. Raleigh, we have 13 commission members, but we only have three paid staff. If you look down to the biggest outlier, you have Charlotte. They have 45 commission members and 15, and that's been updated to 17 paid support staff. I want to mention that Charlotte is an outlier because they're also Charlotte Mecklenburg County. So they're serving over a million people. So we can just cover that one up and just look at all of the other cities. And even still, Raleigh has the least number of staff. And so as pointed out here, a Senior Community Relations Analyst position has been included in the proposed budget for next year. So funding this request will actually bring Raleigh's number of paid support staff to four in alignment with Greensboro, even though Greensboro has a two-to-one ratio. They've got four staff persons and eight commission members. Something else that I've observed from all of the boards is this question of advisory versus advocacy. All of the boards have been listed as advisory under my purview. However, most of them function with some level of advocacy. So I wanted to put the definition here just to go through it. So advocacy is defined as public support for or recommendation of a particular cause or policy. Support for, arguing for, pushing for. To function in an advisory capacity, it's a little bit different. So the boards and commissions that are underneath Human Relations would greatly benefit from clarification from council. And let me make this point. Over a five-year period, on average, each of the four boards went before council only once. And they go before council to submit a work plan and to update on what they did last year. So they are not truly functioning in an advisory capacity. They're just reporting out, this is what we want to do, this is what we did. The ordinances that are currently being utilized are outdated, in some cases irrelevant. So again, defining these functions means we're going to have to update the ordinances and then update the functions specifically of what we want these boards to do. Ideally, advisory boards should aim to keep council informed on emerging issues within the community. That means we're doing outreach, we're doing education, we're talking to residents. We should also educate the community with specific opportunities for learning. So I'm going to use the Fair Housing Hearing Board. They do a conference every year. And it's a very well-received, well-attended conference, and the community raves about it. So more of those types of activities. Additionally, to convene a stakeholder group with a human rights focus consisting of partnerships with nonprofits, corporations, and other government organizations. That whole process is called collective impact. And it's just utilizing and leveraging all the resources that are out there in the community to push forward the work of the City of Raleigh. And then lastly, identifying opportunities for policy and governing improvements. So in a nutshell, an ideal advisory board would do these things for council. But we've got some boards that do some different things. So the idea is to streamline it, and what does that look like? Two of the ordinances, Human Relations and also the Substance Use Advisory Commission, state that you will have one member who is 21 or younger. We have no youth or young adult engagement in any of the boards. So that's something that we need to do differently, and it's a different focus that these groups need to have. Nominations and appointments. Again, this is some of the same information that you all saw before with the other report at council retreat. Inclusive representation is still a need. Skill set consideration. One of the things that all of our boards do is they solicit sponsors and fundraisers for the events that we put on. That is a skill set. Some boards have it, some boards do not. And then depending on the type of board, you also want skill set in that area of expertise. So if we're dealing with human rights, you want people who have some background in human rights. Also, term limits. We want to make sure that as the city continues to grow, that as many people who want to participate have the opportunity to participate. So we want to create term limits where folks can serve, and then they can roll off, and then the next group comes on. And again, the Mayor's Committee for Persons with Disabilities does not require nominations from the mayor or a city council. Instead, interested parties must show an interest and attend three meetings. Now, if you review the ordinance, the ordinance or the bylaws don't read that way. The bylaws say that you can attend and become a member, and then you will be reappointed by the mayor and city council. However, that hasn't been the practice. So that's something else to consider, going back to streamlining this process. Training and orientation. We've got different processes for folks who come in on different boards. Having one standard process, particularly just for the boards under this commission, would be helpful. But I would even venture out to say that would be helpful for boards across the gamut. It would be helpful to have staff liaisons to orient new board members to the city's practices as well as the work plan and the operations of the board. One of the things that I've had on boards that I've managed in the past are position descriptions. People can read the position description of the board that they're applying for and see if it fits their areas of interest and/or their skill set. I found that incredibly helpful in selecting board members because that's how you have an effective board, people who can contribute in certain areas. And then the creation of a standard operating procedure manual for each board. Overall recommendations, we have an opportunity to create a new Human Relations Commission by merging the boards. Again, just to reiterate, Human Relations Commission being the umbrella and the other boards being the arms. The new Human Relations Commission will not have governing power over the boards, but it's just a greater opportunity to collaborate and to start to look at the synergies between the issues and things that are going on. Adding guiding principles helps us frame up our areas of focus and how we want to proceed. And then adding a component for mental health. Execute current Fair Housing Ordinance to allow dispute resolution and hearing powers. I'll say this, if you haven't had the opportunity to attend a tenant and landlord training, you would be surprised at some of the questions that are asked in that training. It makes me say, whoo, we need enforcement powers, and we need more education for landlords and tenants. I would venture to say that there's probably a lot out there that we just don't know about because there's no enforcement capabilities currently. And then to review and update out-of-date ordinances, and then increase staffing for HRC to the minimum level of four, which is consistent with Human Relations Commissions across the state. Again, to convene a stakeholder group with corporations, nonprofits, and other government entities that are interested in human relations work, but also ones that have a focus on social responsibility and would want to contribute time and energy. That helps the volunteers who are out in the community pushing this work. The board should be reflective of community demographics, and then we really need a youth, young, and adult focus for human relations. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Excellent presentation.
Definitely thank you. Sitting here, I'm thinking, wow, I wish we had just had to retreat. Because I think this is, you know, going into it my, what I was thinking, of really taking the time to do a deep dive. Granted, you did this on these four, but I just imagine what the others look like. And I just want to say thank you for the work. And of these recommendations, I definitely think as a council, we need to start prioritizing these and look at, you know, which ones, like needing youth and young adults focused, that's something I say immediately as we're looking at appointments that we can start doing. You know, look at the low-hanging fruit and going forward, you know, on how we can make sure that our Human Relations Commission, you know, has a community focus and they have what the skills they need, and staff has the tools they need. And I think that's the goal of us as council members, making sure that we provide the resources and the direction. But then, once we provide the direction, sometimes just get out of the way and let them do the work that we've tasked them to do based on clear descriptions of jobs and responsibilities. So those are definitely, you know, my comments, and I'm pretty sure knowing my fellow council members, others have some comments they would like to make. Whoever's source.
Sure. I'm particularly interested in the comments regarding the Fair Housing Hearing Board. And I would be interested in knowing what resources we would need in the next year's budget in order to be able to support actually having hearings.
If you want to put that in the form of a request for a budget note, we can write that up and bring it back.
Okay. Can I do that now?
You may.
All right, I'll put that in a request for a budget note then.
For next year's budget, okay.
I would say there's some legal hoops to jump through before the board can actually do those particular things. And there's also, the state does that right now, but I've given, we have a pretty extensive memo that goes through what would need to be done to actually sit in that capacity.
Yeah. And there was a request made earlier this year to staff to look into converting them, the board, to actually view hearings, and it's at the attorney's office, on getting that information as well as, that is one of the big heavy lifts of training individuals to hear cases. But just so everyone knows, as of right now, if someone has an issue, they can still call us. It goes to the state. And the state is currently hearing those cases. So I just want people not think they're not being heard at all, but there is a mechanism right now for them to be heard. We're just saying, bringing that back to Raleigh to view.
Then this information would be useful then in terms of informing the budget note. And looking at funding.
I think adding the aspect of mental health. As the diversity in the city happens, and we just see more and more incidences of situations where mental health plays a part, is going to be a very good part of the board that hasn't been looked at. So I commend your work.
Thank you.
Yeah, and also possibly working with the county on that, because I know they have a lot more emphasis on that than the city as far as resources and programs.
Anyone else?
I think it's a fabulous plan and great recommendations, and I would echo Ms. Crowder's points about the mental health focus.
Thank you.
All right. That is all. Thank you so much. And we'll continue. I'm actually the liaison for Human Relations, I mean, not Human Relations, but the Fair Housing Board and the Substance Use. So I know we'll be talking more.
Excellent. Thank you all.
All right. All right. Next, update the Raleigh Pathway Center.
Yes. Mayor pro temp council, last item is just an update on some of the work that's been going on in the Pathway Center. As you may recall, this discussion about around the use of the building, but also how to focus on opportunities for workforce development, particularly with youth, is something that's been a high priority, and there has been quite a lot of work done. So the purpose today is to simply share with you the success that is going on at the Raleigh Pathway Center right now. Kathy Ector is here from Housing and Neighborhoods, and will provide a presentation.
Thank you, Ruffin. And good afternoon, council members. I'm really excited to be here to talk about what's going on at the Raleigh Pathway Center. I am the Youth Services Manager and the Raleigh Pathway Center Manager, and we are housed in the Community Engagement Division of the Housing and Neighborhoods. Back in 2014 to 2015, city staff held community meetings in southeast Raleigh to talk about and gather ideas and support for repurposing the property at 900 South Wilmington Street, formerly known as the Raleigh Business Center, Raleigh Business and Technology Center, or the Incubator. The feedback that we got from the community had a recurring theme. And one of the things that rose up to the top was that southeast Raleigh wanted the center to remain an integral asset in southeast Raleigh. They wanted us to concentrate and focus on establishing trust, transparency, vision, and hope at the center. They wanted us to continue our partnership with Shaw University and St. Augustine's University. And they also wanted us to focus on upward mobility, workforce development opportunities, economic vitality, and community partnerships. So the working group took this information and organized a community work group to develop a request for quotes for and managing operator for the facility. However, the submissions that we received didn't really align with the community feedback. So the city partnered with My Brother's Keeper Initiative to develop reopening options. Out of these conversations became the Raleigh Pathway Center. And the Pathway Center was created to adequately address community feedback and focus primarily on economic vitality and youth workforce development. We found that the community was right on target with their request. As we started looking at data, we found some startling statistics. Seventeen percent of young adults aged 18 to 24 are out of work. The majority of these out-of-work youth are low-income, black, or Hispanic. Only two-thirds of them have a high school diploma, and more than 30% of them live below the poverty line. We also found that for ages 16 to 24, the labor force declined from 65.5% in 1996 to 52.5% in 2016. It's projected to drop even further in 2016 to 52.5%. And minorities face unemployment levels that are double that of their white counterparts. In North Carolina specifically, when we looked at that data, we found that a third of youth are underemployed. A quarter of them are working part-time because there are no full-time positions available. And youth unemployment rates are double that of adults. It's really clear that there are long-term economic benefits for connecting young people to resources and skills that will help them achieve financial stability and success. And the Raleigh Pathway Center. Our mission, by building on the statistics that we found, we worked by, to develop a partnership with Capital Area Workforce Development Board and Waittech Community College to create the Raleigh Pathway Center. The center works as a way to connect young adults to workforce development training and certifications, employment and career opportunities, supportive services, resources to increase opportunity and provide pathways to success. We found that even having these young people in our program, we needed to have supportive services for them. Things like bus passes, interview clothing, family support services. All these things were important to help our young people in our workforce development training. Also, building on the statistics and the data that we found, we referred to the Regional Workforce Skills Analysis Report to develop five access points or focal points. They include high-growth industry workforce development, skills trades training, internships and apprenticeships, entrepreneurship and micro-business development, and public service career development. You may be asking, what's micro-businesses? What is the youth entrepreneurship part of it? We found that a significant part, a significant number of our participants were already engaged in some sort of entrepreneurship. We have two young, two young men in our programs who have started a lawn care business. We have students that have started businesses selling and trading sneakers online. So we wanted to provide the skills and resources for these young people to really have viable businesses. I'm really happy to announce that we've partnered with the Carolina Small Business Development Fund to have our first youth entrepreneurship. Fund to have our first youth entrepreneurship boot camp at the Pathway Center in July. So we're really excited about that. I want to show you a few of our programs that we have at the Pathway Center. The Capital Area Youth Build Program, we're now in our fifth cohort. These young men and women are now engaged in a six-week boot camp at the center. They're actually building the sheds at the center. And then they're headed to Habitat for Humanity to do an eight-week paid internship there. When they graduate from our program, they'll have an HBI PACT certification so they can go out and get any construction job. Also, as they move through our program, we help connect them to employment opportunities. One of our favorite, that I'm sure that a lot of you already know about, is the Raleigh Summer Youth Employment Program. We just completed orientation for 200 youth that will be working in city divisions and departments this year. We're really excited that we have over 80% of our departments that are participating in this program. Also, really excited that we are one of only four sites in the country that America Saves for Young Workers. They have developed a phone app for our students so they can learn how to budget their money, how to spend their money, and how to save our money. We have almost 100% of our students that participate in direct deposit and over 45% of them participate in America Saves for Young Workers where they pledge to save some of their summer earnings. And Partnership Raleigh. We just got a call just a few weeks ago that Verizon Wireless wants to partner with us for Partnership Raleigh and have more internship opportunities. Right now, we have, as of today, Ashley, and I didn't get a chance to update my slide, but we have 91 registered participants. In June, we will start our brand-new Partnership Raleigh internship program that has been funded for the past three years by Bank of America. And we've also partnered with some of the local nonprofits that have been funded by our human relations commission. We are putting out interns there, so they're working, they're serving as work sites for these new interns. And I'm so happy to see that Dr. Caesar mentioned the youth and young adult connection because we have one of those interns who's going to be working in her office. So that's a start for that. And Digital Connectors is another one of our really star programs. The Digital Connectors spend, a lot of their focus on bridging the digital divide. During the past nine months, this program has helped the participants facilitate and train various underserved groups and organizations in digital literacy skills. And one of my favorite things that they did was that they helped 40 of our foster grandparents train on digital literacy just a few months ago. And I was really excited to see that. Our other programs and services are listed and I just want to point out a couple of those. Our Connect to Success, that's where, again, we provide resources like pre-employment training, interview and career clothes, mental health service connections, bus passes, family support services, all these things that young people need to be able to succeed in either their job or training to get a job. Our Life Skill Development Training and Bring Your A Game to Work Curriculum is very popular with our students. I'm also always excited to note this statistic, Raleigh has the most A-game certified youth in the country. Since 2014, we have certified over 500 youth in our program, so we're really excited about that. And then lastly, our Working Smart Program is a soft skills training program to provide job seekers work and life skill enhancement because we know that a lot of employers are looking for that type of soft skill development in their employees. They want employees that know how to communicate, know how to resolve conflict, know how to get to work on time, have good problem-solving skills. So we offer the Working Smart Curriculum through Wake Tech to our participants and so far, we've been able to certify 20 young adults in the Working Smart Curriculum. We've also provided you a list of our program partners. We do a lot of work leveraging our partnerships with our community partners because we want to be able to offer all of our services for free for our participants. We partnered with Parks, Recreation, and Culture Resources that provide training, interviewing. They help interview with us and provide work sites for our students. We work with the Office of Economic Development. They help us with the job outlook and data, our corporate connections. And whenever we're asking the question, what are employers looking for, we can always look to their office to help us. We also are working with the City of Raleigh Public Utilities and Public Works, especially in their diversity and inclusion hiring efforts. We're working together to have a job fair at the Pathway Center in September. And lastly, we are working very diligently with St. Augustine's University and Shaw University, just as the community asks us to. Both, we have representatives that serve on our steering committee and students from both those schools are involved in our programs. So as you can see, we're making sure that we are honoring the community's request for us to do economic development and youth workforce development, especially in southeast Raleigh. We are making sure that we have programs that are available to the community. Right now, we have six programs that serve over 400 students and we've done this in about 18 months' time at the Pathway Center, so I commend our team for all the work that we've done. And lastly, we are part of the City of Raleigh's strategic plan, specifically 101 of the economic development and innovation of the strategic plan, which says that we should identify and enhance workforce development partnerships and efforts and actively serve as a conduit to residents, businesses, and resource partners to attract, retain, and engage a talented workforce of various skills, ages, backgrounds, and support a diverse and growing economy. I invite you guys to please come to the Pathway Center, come meet our students, come see what we're doing, and find out ways that you can be involved with us. Thanks so much, I'm happy to answer your question.
Thank you very much. I do have one question for Ruffin. Only 80% of our departments? I'll just leave it there. It's only 80% of our department, so.
And that's not really his fault.
It's not, it's not, it's not, but he's at the table.
I understand the message, Mr. Rich.
Okay. And, but one thing to, I have one question.
Sure.
Of our partners, which I thank them for their work and their participation, our youth, I'm sure, have a lot of interests. Are there any interests that we need to find more partners for to kind of fulfill those needs?
Yes, I'm glad you asked that question. We can certainly use more job coaches and mentors. That is something that we are noticing that our students need and now they're also asking for as they're doing career exploration or being involved in different jobs. They're looking for people who are already in those jobs, you know, what is the path that I need to take? What courses do I need to take at school? Is there some sort of route that I should be taking to get to where I want to be? So job coaches and mentors is very.
And is there a way maybe, Ruffin, this can be in our manager's report, a list of what those jobs and careers choices are?
Sure, I can provide that.
So we can have that and then maybe we can go out.
If we could even put it on our website.
Yeah, and our website as well.
So Kathy, thank you for that interesting report and the work y'all are doing. I would say if you could really put a lot of emphasis on these youth that have dropped out of high school to get at least a GED or go back to high school and finish, because if you don't have that, all the rest of the stuff you're doing is going to be so much harder for them.
I'm glad you mentioned that. Our youth build program specifically works with students who are earning their GED. So.
I saw you had six that had graduated.
Yes, sir.
And you had 47, I think, that were trying to get in there.
Right, and that's because some of our students are still working and so they're doing their GED work on, as aside from that, but it is clearly something that we need to work on.
That would be great. That's the key, I think.
Yes, you're right.
Education.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for all you're doing. It's exciting to hear about it. It's exciting to see your energy and passion for the job, that's great. You mentioned some sobering statistics about unemployment disparities and obviously, this is something that I care a lot about, trying to eliminate these kind of disparities and it seems like your programs that you're providing go right to the heart of those things and so I'm almost trying to talk about investing in our human capital and it seems like you're right on target there and I'm just wondering, what would you need to scale your investments in our human capital up? More staffing, more facilities, more partners?
Helping us get the word out. As I said, we've only been there working for about 18 months or so. So helping us get the word out about what the Pathway Center is doing. We are attracting funders now, like I got the call from Verizon Wireless, I was so excited because they found out what we were doing and they're willing to help fund what we're doing. But helping us get the word out, coming and seeing what we're doing, helping us make those connections, helping us build more community partnerships, all those are helpful.
So you have capacity to scale up if you have better community.
I believe so. But again, if we have more staff, that's a budget note, right?
Remember, her managers are in the building, so she's treading lightly.
That's right.
Any other questions, councilors?
Yeah, I love the Pathway Center so much, I got to go visit it and I definitely recommend everybody else doing so.
Definitely.
It's an incredible thing and it just fills my heart with such joy, so it's so good to see y'all.
Thank you so much, Ms. Dorn. I appreciate that.
Actually, one last question, the youth entrepreneur boot camp, when in July?
The week of July 8th.
July 8th.
And we actually have the president of the Carolina Small Business Development Fund, who is going to teach the class along with Dr. Hunter Rainey from Shaw University.
Perfect, great.
So they're helping us design that class and are willing to instruct it, so it's a great investment that they're doing for us as well.
And if anyone wants to sign up, they just go to the city website?
We don't, we just started it. We will have the information on that within the next few weeks and it will be on the website.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you, thank you for what you are doing.
You're welcome.
And everything. I think that's everything on the agenda and we are adjourned.
Please give a warm welcome to your musical hosts this evening, Kevin and Greg.
Let's start at the very beginning, a very good place to start. When you learn to read, it's A-B-C. When you host a show, you sing honorees. With eight honorees, you will need me. Do, re, mi, fa, sol, no, Kevin.
Why, what's wrong already? I've already something?
Cliche, gay couple cabaret.
Show tunes, too many show tunes. I knew it, I knew it.
We've done it, we've done it. Let's try something.
Something different, something different.
I'm a little bit pine cone.
Well, I'm Dix Park Conservancy.
I'm a little bit of bluegrass twang.
I like my art in my trees.
We know there's nothing bad, it's the arts diversity. I'm a little bit pine cone.
I'm Dix Park Conservancy.
Could I have this dance with some class yet some spice? Freddie Lee has us dancing through all stages of life. From youngsters to seniors, Mr. Heath can't be beat. He even taught me to dance with my two left feet. Here's the story, Martha Needles Caravory, who has been a mom to many of our groups from Arts Access United Art and NCTC. She even performed for our troops. So we thank you.